Time is 6:00 PM. I would like to call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, July 24th. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bimonthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
All right, if you would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.04 on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
A motion? I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Item 1.05, these are the minutes from our special board meeting that was held on June 26th. 1.06 are the minutes from the regular board meeting held June the 26th. It looks like we have a vote box. Do I have a motion to approve 1.05 and 1.06?
All motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, with that approved, we can move on. Item two on the agenda is the presentation section. We do not have a presentation this month. So we can go ahead and move right on to item three, which is the personnel superintendent recommendations. So at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Mrs. Rogen.
Thank you, Madam President. In our first section on... ...at that time, so you are familiar that these three individuals will be returning. So we're delighted to have them back. So I do have a voting box right there, so I'll stop.
Do I have a motion to approve?
All motion.
I'll second. Interesting. Love you.
Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Rogen.
All right. Under section 3.02, under employment, item number one. We had our physical education and health teacher retire very late, right before the July 9th date where you really can't hire her for that date. So we are delighted that John Cole will be joining us as the PE health teacher. So I also have a voting box there. That is our only teacher at the moment we're hiring because everyone else we already had hired early and then we had this late resignation.
Point that.
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote.
Mrs. Camp House. Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole. Abstain.
All right, we'll continue with employment. We have a number of sections. I would like to welcome two new educational aides who will be joining us. Josh Davis and Adam Moller. So welcome to them. The other items are some extended days and some extended time for individuals over the summer. We did have also some changes for avenues for success with site coordinators and some extra hours. The next items change some, several people are having a change of status in terms of where they're working. It has to approve every year for the various levels of subs who work in our district throughout the year. They're hired through Hamilton County, but we have to set the rates of pay. For a varsity football assistant and boy soccer at the middle school, the assistant. So welcome to Michael Francis and Nathan Robinson. And we have a voting box and thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogen. Do I have a motion to approve? Number two, as well as number three.
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, moving on with the agenda, item four, this is education committee. So I will turn it over to board member Mrs. Rarica.
Well, I thank you, Madam President. The first thing we have is Weston City Kids Operating Company LLC. And that is, I just got an email telling me all about it. It is a program that will be coming in to give therapeutic services to our elementary kids in the elementary schools so they do not have to leave school to get these services. It's fabulous. We're excited. And that's what that is. Then next we have, oh wait, do we, we do approval at the end. Okay, awesome. Next is we have all our handbooks. I'm sure we've looked at them a lot.
And on those, there were just changes like the principal changed, the secretary changed, the phone number changed. It was just minor changes.
Nothing, no meat changed.
No.
And then we have the Nord City School Online Day Plan. And this is our plan for if we have a snow day in which we need to do online lessons for. We've got our plan already set so then we don't have to miss any more days of school. Because I know you don't want to go to school in June. But don't worry, it won't happen all the time. I don't want them yelling at me about no snow days. Still get snow days.
Think we had five last year. It was a rough weather.
Oh, and that, that, isn't that the limit?
It's technically hours, but it's approximately, yes, approximately five days.
So then like on the sixth day, you could totally do an online.
Yes.
And then you wouldn't have to come to school in June. Yay. Oh, okay, so we're at our voting box finally. So I move that we approve 4.01, 4.02, and 4.03.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. All right, continuing on with the agenda, item five, this is the policy committee report. So at this time, I will turn it over to board member Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. First up, we have a resolution to authorize and direct OSBA to make recommended policy changes in light of House Bill 33 legislative, legislative changes impacting ODE and SBOE. Whereas the Board of Education authorized the Ohio School Board Association, OSBA, to commence a thorough review of individual board policies to identify those policies requiring updates due to the new House Bill 33 legislative requirements impacting the Ohio Department of Education and the State Board of Education. And whereas OSBA created a chart for the board outlining the specific policy sections that require updates and provide, provided a summary of the proposed language changes for each affected policy. And now therefore be it resolved that the board adopts the recommended policy modifications outlined on the attached recommended policy updates chart with an immediate effective date and further resolve that the board authorizes and directs OSBA to make the recommended policy modifications set forth above and outlined on the attached recommended policy updates chart. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon approval. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Why is this resolution even needed?
Yeah. I don't exactly know, but it was recommended by OSBA and we do have the chart of all the policies that they went through. And then they asked next month that they would bring the chart so that everyone can see the chart. We don't have to read all the policies, but they make the changes. Because about a year ago, maybe less than a year ago, you all gave permission for them to do this in the first place.
Exactly.
And then now they...
I was wondering the same thing.
They felt this, they felt that this might have covered all their bases.
I feel like it's redundant because we were, I was in the same bed. I was going to ask the same exact thing.
When I saw it, I felt like, oh, maybe it's a thing we have to do every year. Like we do all this stuff in January. We have to redo all the, re-say all the things that we're doing. That's what I figured it was.
From ODE to DO were so, in like so many different policies, they felt compelled to ask you about a year or so ago, do they have your permission to individually look at all our policies? And to which you all said, yes, please do so. They have a chart for us for you all to review next month, but they said in order to do that, to present this chart to you, you have to have a resolution again, I guess, to allow them to do this work.
But they haven't even told us what they're trying to, like it says it's for the attached thing, but they don't give us the attachment.
We have the attachment, but we were asked to have you do a resolution first and then share the attachment. The attachment is just sheets of paper. I can actually put it in here or if you say like, oh, we want to hold and do it all the same. They asked that it be on two separate occasions, but if you would say, we'd like to wait to August to see the chart that lists all the policies, we can do that, of course.
Yeah, because if we say all and then maybe we don't like, you know, something that they slip in on us, I, I feel like that's them going, don't look over here. I don't like that.
Okay, they, they, they're, they work for all of you.
I know.
Yeah.
But if we agree to say, we're going to honor everything.
If you want to wait, that's fine.
I have no problem with this.
Just feels weird.
It just, because I felt we already had taken care of this previously.
Yeah.
So...
Brandon, we took care of that cellphone policy too.
I'm not objecting to it at all. I just thought that this was weird when I saw it.
It seems redundant. You're right.
Yeah, it's more of a why, not a...
And it's probably a legality thing.
It didn't come through their normal way. It came through in the summer when OSBA sent an email to the district and said, this is what we'd like you to do. And they even acknowledged about a year ago, you gave us permission to do this, but now we need to resolve, do a new resolution. So I'm fine to hold it. If you want to see all the changes they made, they really are ODE to DO.
Well, and it's just to make recommendations. They don't automatically change it.
So we're not automatically saying that they can change it.
No, they don't change it until you change it.
Right.
Next month, you change it.
Right.
Yeah. They're just being specific because of the new House bill versus last year was a general, we're going to look at everything. This is now only in relation to this bill.
That's probably why they have to do it twice.
Okay. It's how it's specific.
Because now the House bill said so.
Oh, goodie.
You'll get an opportunity. You won't dare ask Mr. Taylor to read through four pages of policies.
Is that what I'm doing next? I'm going to read four pages?
It's a retreat.
Mr. Taylor? We'll bring them all and you'll clearly be able to see like the line they made changes to. So you'll, you'll see the changes.
Nope. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome. Our, as our director of curriculum, are you comfortable with this?
I'm comfortable with that.
I was like, it's here, so I'm assuming you're comfortable.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it because nothing happens. It just says, we're allowed, you're allowing them to suggest and make the changes if you approve that, the changes next month.
Sure.
Just recommendations.
Maybe it's a thing if you maybe do the thing.
Nothing happens until we send the okay to them.
Anything further? Clear as mud, huh?
Bring the big scissors next month for all that red tape. We got to cut through, guys.
All right, Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
All right.
And I have...
Oh, yeah, that's you. Sorry, keep going.
And now we have the second reading of, first one is EDEC, Artificial Intelligence. Provides direction for district use of AI tools, enabling district administration to establish district procedures and protocols for managing AI. DJF, purchasing procedures revised to reflect uniform changes to the Uniform Grant Guidance Requirements. DJF-R, purchasing procedures revised to reflect changes to the Uniform Grant Guidance Requirements. Updating purchasing requirements, district-specific rules on purchasing. DECA, administration of federal grant funds revised to reflect changes to the Uniform Grant Guidance Requirements. IGBJ, Title I Program, annual readoption of two Title I-based policies that we are asked to readopt each year. And IGBL, parent and family involvement in education. Annual readoption of two policies that we are asked to readopt each year. And with that, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the second reading of the policies.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I do want to know if the district is looking at using any of the approved programs that are coming out like for AI. There are several tools that are student-based learning that have been very helpful, especially for outlining curriculum maps and, you know, grading tools. There's all kinds of different things that are coming out for our teachers to use that have been fantastic and...
Actually, this policy really talks about the board adopting a policy that puts the parameters in place for this. And in the budget bill, it was passed that the, the DO has to create a model policy for the districts by this December of '25. Then starting, that'll give us from next January through July to decide if we wanted to adopt their policy. I would imagine it's going to be a very long one, similar to the special education one. Their model policy that you just approved a couple of months ago. So they're actually putting it together, or will be putting it together by December, which kind of gives us parameters about what software we should, we should buy and how we should look at things. So we are waiting for that before we go out and start purchasing stuff.
Okay, we've, we've been introduced to several through either the conferences or some classes that I've been working with in a couple of the different districts. And I, I would love the opportunity to have some of them come in and present to you guys and let you know what the possibilities could be. There aren't that many that are approved for full school use. Some are more for administrators, some are more for teachers, you know, but some kind of have an all-encompassing aspect that might be beneficial for our district.
Well, thank you.
Anything further? Mrs. Camp House.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
All right, continuing on, item six, this is Building and Grounds Committee. So I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. My computer just died. I know there was a request on there.
Oh, here, here.
I don't know what it is. I don't have a full report for this month, but if you do drive down Williams Avenue, you will see some progress being made on our playground and parking and drop-off area. So that's coming along nicely. Mr. Peter, is there any news as to the Williams? Like, what's going on with it, where they are?
We met yesterday, we did discuss getting some extra parking for, in that large playground for teachers and staff. So that will be helpful. Otherwise, they think the rain we had was a hurdle. So, yeah, we are pretty packed a little bit, but other than that, things are starting to go along.
Cool, thank you. All right, so the, it looks like the one request that we have is for Presentation Ministries. And, let's see here, they'd like to use the Norwood View Auditorium for a play that they're doing. They're gonna be doing rehearsals to be determined on certain dates, pending approval, with performance dates on August 15th and 16th in the evening. And I believe we did this before for them, let them use
We did, but it did not get approved, so we do need to approve it
Right.
at this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the usage.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
And that concludes my report. My computer's off.
All right, item seven on the agenda, this is Finance Committee. So at this time, I will turn it over to our Treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. On the agenda, the financial reports for June, year-ending 2025, and the CFO report are attached for your approval. 7.02, appropriation resolution, the temporary budget for the current year, and 412 certificate, it will remain temporary until October. 7.03, their certificate of beginning balances and total amount from all sources available for expenditures. This annual report starts the required oversight from the county auditor. Future versions of this report will be called the amended certificate. 7.04, ASME MOU. This memorandum of understanding allows us to increase the pay of the HVAC maintenance staff member to attract someone with experience. He will be working closely with our maintenance staff and training them. 7.05, salary schedule, administrative salary schedule, to reflect the COA change for admin following the NTA agreement. 7.06, resolution to declare transportation impractical. Per ODU mandates, each district must transport private and community school students or declare it impractical, because we have no transportation department, and all schools fall outside of our district, it is impractical to transport. 7.07, approved van transportation provider. After our second RFP process this summer, we are now selecting a new van transportation provider. You will remember that the first RFP resulted in savings to the district for school bus services. This RFP will provide savings also, as well as change providers to one whose history has always been school transportation. We think UTS or Universal Transportation Systems will be a great fit for our district and will result in savings also. You are approving a three-year agreement, or you're considering a three-year agreement. 7.08, then and now purchase orders, a few purchase orders that need further approval due to end-of-year, beginning-of-year transitions. 7.09, a new account for career awareness, for our Great Oaks Career Awareness Funding. 7.10, fiscal year '26, I am very happy to say that we have allocations for the following federal grants, Title I, IDEA, and IDEA preschool, and 21st Century. These amounts are lower than typical, and the, and the approval is much later than normal, but I am very glad to say they finally came through. 7.11, transfer to move OHSAA tournament proceeds to the athletic fund. 7.12, disposal of technology items. These items are being recycled. If you know anything about our technology department, these items are worn out and cannot be recycled, reused, or harvested for other parts anymore, so they're being recycled. 7.13, special education agreements, we have two more contracts for the fiscal year '26 school year, and those are for qualifying students with an IEP. 7.14, '25, '26, perceptions counseling, to provide another therapist from perceptions counseling for the upcoming school year. And that is everything, that's a lot, for the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Camp House. I noticed on our hard copies, we have a vote box after 7.01, did we need that? Or can we just do these all together? I didn't even see that, flew right past it.
No, it's not on the computer.
It is on
7.10?
Oh, it is there, yes.
We do not need that.
We don't need that. All right. So, do I have a motion to approve 7.01 through 7.14?
A motion.
Do I have a second? All right, any discussion?
Thanks for saving us some money on the vans, Julie.
On the what?
The vans. And then also, I'm particularly excited about the fiscal year '26 grants, because I don't know about the rest of the public, but if you've been worried about whether or not we're gonna get money and sweating because of that, uh, there it is. That's it in our report, we've got it.
That means preschool happens, like
Yeah, that means we have preschool, that means we have special, special ed. Is the Title I, our free lunches?
No, Title I is our pull-out program that we do for
I know we have to do through that to get our lunches. Are any of these our lunches?
No, that's
Or we don't have to do that till we get that later?
But it's like less than half of what we typically get.
It is, and there were several grants that we've not been approved for yet, and I, I hate to, I'm not trying to get everybody's hopes up, but I, I think this means we're going to get the grants, because usually that's what happens, the allocation drops into place, and then we, you know, we approve the budgets and we move forward and start spending the money.
So we can still sweat a little bit?
I, I've not heard anything else. I think we're okay, but there are several grants that we did not get. But all the grants that support our staff, that we have staffing tied to, we did get. So that's, that's meaningful to us, that we can keep those programs in place.
And then 21st Century is on there.
That's the, that's the avenues one, which is so important to parents.
I was gonna say, I'll go ahead and say now, avenues for success is a go for next year.
Yes, we have our after-school programming for next year. We don't want to say after that, we're not sure, but we have it, we have it for this coming year.
I cannot express to the public more how, like, skin of our teeth this always is. It's scary stuff, you guys.
Julie, the 7.12, the disposal of technology items, I just happened to click on that attachment this week. I'm assuming that's necessary? Is that somebody's, I mean, is that taking a lot of time for somebody to do that? Is that, we have to do that?
We do. And we actually, anything that, you just changed the policy for DID that says now we only have to count things that are over $10,000. But when it comes to computers, because when we buy them, we buy them at over $10,000, so we lump them all together.
Okay.
We have to track them, and we have to keep track of them, and we have to know where they are, and we have to tag them and all that good stuff. It is, it's a lot of time. But it is mandated, and Randall and his team do a great job.
Well, that was my assumption, but like I said, I just happened to click on it this week at home, and I, my first, I was like, how terrible is that? My first thought is, who does this? You know, and I thought, I bet we have to do this.
He's actually got a scanner now, and, and scans it and loads it all into a spreadsheet. So for him, it's, it's gotten better.
Okay.
But it's still a lot of work.
I mean, he's just, I know how hard he works and how smart he is, and I, you know, it's just a shame that that's
I know.
You know, it's like, can we just say, if Randall thinks it needs to be tossed, can we toss it?
It's on there, I'm telling you, it has been used, and like I said, he, he has a whole room full of stuff that he harvests parts from. Reminds me of a cartoon sometimes.
Say, can he build a robot out of this stuff?
Very good.
All right, anything else? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, item eight, this is the hearing of the public, and we have no one here. Section nine on the agenda, this is the Report Section 9.01, Board Announcements. Do we have any announcements from the board?
I have one. I just learned this morning, and I'm a parent of high schoolers, so it's a big deal to me, and it could be a big deal to you if you have a high schooler, too. Homecoming is September 6th. I don't know how many people are even actually watching this, but hey, I am trying to warn you ahead of time.
That's early.
That's very early. Don't go yelling at Chuck or anyone else. It has to be negoti, this is just stuff I've been told, please don't yell at me either. It has to be negotiated between all the teams that we play, and then each of us has to take turns being the early ones. I remember when my kiddo was a freshman, it was quite late. So we have to take our turn. Somebody else had to go super early that year. So we have to take our turn, so we're gonna be big girls and boys.
You're coming home at the beginning of the year, so have homecoming at the beginning of the year.
Yep.
Be excited, get a dress.
It's gonna be awesome. Go get ready, like, now. Because those dresses take a long time to come in the mail. I know my kid's wearing one she got last year that didn't come soon enough.
Any other board announcements?
I did just find in my notes, the AI programs that I was talking about, if you want to look them up, Magic School, School Joy, or School AI, those are the three approved ones that the people have been talking about a lot at the conferences. So those are something we could potentially look into.
Any other announcements?
Do you have one? So I want to give a great big congratulations to the Norwood Barracudas
Oh, yeah.
for winning the small group championships for the NSSL meet that was held a couple weeks ago. We allowed them to use Shea Stadium. So this was an event where they had, I don't know, 4,000 to 5,000 people camped out at Shea, and then they used that as a staging ground, and everybody would come in and swim their event at Waterworks and then go back to Shea. And it ran really well, because for 4,000 to 5,000 people, they had three tiny little bleachers set up out on Harris Avenue on the other side of the fence. So all these people had to rotate in and out for their kiddos' events.
And I don't think they had the bleachers there six years ago, was it five years ago?
No, this, this was new.
Oh, and I think they just get pulled in, right? Because they're not there on a daily basis. Like, you go there now, there's no bleachers.
No, no, the bleachers were, were renewable. I mean, they just rented them, and they just plop them down right there, and
Because it hasn't been here, what, six years?
That's every eight years.
Every eight, okay.
Every eight years, Norwood hosts the event. But, yeah, it was, it was a great event, it was really well-run. Athletic Boosters, Ranka Sessions at Shea, and they had some food trucks out there, and it was a fantastic event, so, yeah.
It's a huge event, it canceled the rec softball league that night, and, and you, you volunteered, right? You
I did, I announced both days.
Yeah.
That was, that was crazy.
You know what else happened at Shea that was awesome? July 4th. I'm sure, I'm sure the committee thanks you, it was awesome.
The pictures from the stadium looked so cool with the fireworks, and just how good our, our folks did getting that stadium up to snuff, it just looked fantastic this year.
There were so many people there this year, like, the stadium looked full, which was shocking to me. Well, last year, it rained, so there were like 10 people in the stadium. I mean, and it didn't just sprinkle, it was full force, we were just soaked. Yeah.
Any other announcements? All right, continuing on, 9.02, this is our Superintendent's Report, so I will turn it over to Superintendent, Mrs. Ronan.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I know you have all seen this because you walked past it, but for those who haven't seen it, this is the memorial bench for Kenny Stacy. Staff members and his class of 1986 have donated funds, and in fact, here's his dedicated kitchen staff that loved him, and, you know, he, when he came to work as the Food Service Director, he wanted to make sure that no child was hungry in Norwood. He dropped food off at Parks, took care of everyone, and he's truly missed. So that is just a wonderful memorial to him, and I wanted to make sure that we officially talked about it. Now, moving on to something a little more positive, the Norwood Day Parade. So we had a great showing with our sports teams and lots of folks there, and we gave away candy and had a great time. And the last item I wanted to talk about is the splash back to school and our bounce back to school, because it is taking place this Saturday. So I wanted to make sure everyone knew about it, and I'm sure Laura has advertised it, so that is the flyer, and we'd love to see everyone there this Saturday. And thank you, that does conclude my report.
See some, some familiar faces, did you catch that, Mr. Taylor? Look at the red shirts.
The red shirts.
Yeah. I was, I was looking over there, and I was like, that looks like my kid. I'm like, that is my kid.
Indeed, it is.
From this angle, you can't see it.
And Brett, and Brett Schachelder in there with him. So, yeah.
And in fact, the other picture, we had a lot of parents out in the front lawn of the middle school doing yoga, that's the top picture.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what, I know, it's hard to see from a distance.
Oh, I see it now. Yeah, I heard, I heard the other day that one of the, they were doing a Zumba class or something. And I asked Dylan, I said, did you participate? And he said, not in Zumba.
It's so much fun.
Yeah.
It's hard.
If I had known, I would have gone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ronan. All right, 9.03, this is the Great Oaks Reports, I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. This month has been a very busy one. We just got back, I just got back yesterday from the OSBA conference for our tech sides, that's how we go in the fall for the state for school board side, in the summer is the state's tech side. So we were being given updates on credentialing requirements for a lot of our different fields. Engineering is gonna be a huge one, that's up and coming. We're also looking at expanding programs in welding and in our electric vehicle programs. We actually just approved new curriculum for both of those this month, and the state is thankfully supporting the growth in those fields, so we're getting grants from the state to continue those programs. The other cool thing that we had, held at the end of June, we just got the numbers back, we have an educational foundation golf outing every year. It's a fundraiser that supports scholarship funding for kids in, that may not be able to afford equipment in their fields, and we sponsor those students, we buy them equipment, we get them scholarships and things like that. We raised $56,500 through our auction, the golf outing itself, and donations, and all of that money goes right back into the students to support their learning process. So that was a really amazing thing. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Ballard. 9.04, this is Norwood Community Television, I do have an update. Tyler says they just did the Norwood Day Parade using a live production system we built for graduation and the upcoming sports season. I don't know what that means, but I'm sure it's cool. He says, we streamed it live, but we're currently editing it and adding graphics, and it should be online tonight or tomorrow. So that is what they are up to.
I helped them pack out for that event. We had to use three different cars, so they don't have a vehicle at the moment for getting back and forth to those things with equipment. So I helped them load up my car and their cars and everything to get everything back So I helped them load up my car and their cars and everything to get everything back to the school. I don't know if that's a might, a maybe that we could potentially help them with, but a van.
They used to have.
They used to have.
What happened to that?
I don't think it, it is the, it was the most functional and it just didn't work for them. Uh, for one reason or another. I don't know all the details as to why, but they do not have it currently. So I don't know if there's a rotating schedule they could have with like one of the, the van vehicles or if there's another vehicle in the district that's available for them to use every once in a while. It would make loading out that very heavy equipment much easier on them.
There's the gator.
Well, we'll talk to Mr. Peter about that.
I don't know. I just, I felt bad that, but we, we got it. We got it. It was, it worked.
I'm sure they appreciated your help very much. All right, uh, nine point zero five, this is our OSBA legislative liaison. Uh, so I will turn it back to Ms. Fallon.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I, I don't know if I told you guys or not, but, um, I, I have been added to the A and I committee at the state level, which is the academics, um, and instruction. We do development and discuss curriculum and awards and advocacy and all kinds of different things that are affected statewide. And we, we had a meeting this past weekend or at the conference. We were talking about upcoming topics that are important to districts and those include co-teaching models, literacy interventions, new courses and potentially looking at structuring bell schedules that will function a little bit more seamlessly um, for our teachers, cause everybody seems to be on a different bell schedule depending on what district you're in. Updated curriculums and then also, uh, just future growth potential where we can work with other districts to see what they're doing and create relationships, um, for community development in like job placement and like community partnerships, similar to what we have already with some of our students doing job placement. So that was one of the things that we got to do. And that is, like, that's the state level stuff. We did get a report from Jennifer Hoag and I think she sent it out right before the start of the conference. Apparently the House has voted to override Governor Dewine's veto of number sixty-six, which was restricting political subdivisions in school districts. This is, let's see here, hang on, I can't read the small print. Including school districts from pursuing replacement property tax levies, the one we were talking about, about not being able to create emergency levies and things like that.
The renewal one hurts with no renewal levies.
Right. So that, that was overridden by the House and it's being sent on to the, to the Senate. It needs twenty votes in the Senate to be a successful override. So they have not scheduled a Senate session yet to consider that item, but that's something that we're watching closely. Uh, the House has also previously identified two other possible vetoes. Item number fifty-five, which expands authority for county budget commissions. And item sixty-five, which it revises the twenty mil floor calculation. So they were not considering those at this time. They only looked at sixty-six so far, but they have until the end of the year for this General Assembly to look at them. So we might still see an update on those two items, but those were the only three that they announced considerations for at this time. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fallon. Uh, nine point zero six, this is avenues for success. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Rurik.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, both things I'm gonna say, we've already said, we got our grant, so we're good for one more year, so we can all sit on eggshells next summer. Um, but until then, we're okay. Uh, and then also the splashback and the bounce back this weekend, we didn't really elaborate on that, so I will. Splashback is for junior high and high school kids and it's at our pool, the city pool, and they will get pizza and chips and a drink and they'll get a backpack and supplies. And the bounce back, is it in the yard? As it usually is, but I didn't wanna assume. It'll be in the yard of like the high school and the middle school and it'll be fun activities for the kids and they can come. I think they'll probably also get pizza, but, uh, they have in the past. And they'll get their backpacks and school supplies. Fun stuff. So now you know. That's it. Thanks.
Okay.
And remember, it's this Saturday.
Right. It is this Saturday, like the day after tomorrow. And the bounce back is early in the day. See that? Eight, eight to ten? That's it? Well, that's nice, cause it'll be hot. But you've gotta get up early on a Saturday and go. And then the older kids, oh, are eleven to one. Oh, 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 oh. You shouldn't even let me be doing this. Eight to ten PM for the older kids and eleven to one for the younger kids. That is as expected. Not the shocking thing that I thought before.
Same bad channel, people.
Yes.
All right. Now that we've got that straightened out. Um, item ten, these are our future meeting notifications. So, um, next month will be our final committee and regular meeting combined. Uh, so that will happen on Thursday, August the fourteenth at six PM here in the board office, um, which I believe is the first day of school. So, um, do I have?
Madam President, there's, if you look on the next page, there is a request in October. The committee meeting's on the first Tuesday because of the way the month fell. And that's when the Buckeye Association of School Administrators meeting is, it's like OSBA in Columbus. And I know Mr. Westendorf and I would like to attend. So could we possibly move the committee to the second Tuesday, which it usually is? And the board meeting to the third Thursday? I think it moves to the fourth Thursday.
Fourteen.
Yeah. I know. It, it was just strange. Yeah, it's October fourteenth and October twenty-third. So we were hoping to get that changed so everyone knows in advance. Thank you.
I don't see any issues with that. All right, um, so do I have a motion to approve next month's meeting as well as the change for October?
I will motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Fallon? Yes.
Mrs. Rurik?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole? Yes. All right, item eleven is executive session. I just noticed nothing is highlighted. Is it number one, Mrs. Camp House?
It's number one and.
Seven, I believe.
Number one and seven, okay. So in accordance with Ohio Revised Code one two one point two two G one, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official. And also in accordance with O R C one two one point two two G eight, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll motion.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
I'll second.
Ms. Fallon? Yes.
Mrs. Rurik?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole? Yes. The time is six forty-six and we are in executive session.